Please stand. Joins Congressman Taylor in the salute to our country flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for our prayer, please.
Creator God, thank you for all you have made. We rejoice in your beautiful creation and thank you for the ability to appreciate it and enjoy it. In your Bible, you say, "A leader of good judgment gives stability, but the one who is greedy for bribes carries it down." You also say, "Let him who boasts about this, that he understands and knows you, that you are the Lord who exercises kindness, justice, and righteousness on earth, for in these you delight." Help us to delight in justice since you delight in it. God.
Us to live seeking fairness for businesses, to prosper and families to flourish, and injustice in the courts of law that will lead to a stability and a thriving community. Lord, thank you for our mayor, the city council, and leaders at every level in our city, and give them grace to bring truth, justice, and stability to our city. Give them power to do what is right and to rule in fairness, and may our community always prosper from the influence of good men and women. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. I actually heard some that are, there are some people that dial in for our city council meeting just to hear that prayer. I open our Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting of February 15th. The second item on our agenda is public comments, community announcements, recognitions. We have none at this time. Item number three is consent agenda item A, which is the approval of the minutes of the February 1st Public Works Authority Meeting.
Sub moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes, Ryan.
See the votes. Unanimous approval of, oh, oh, you've even got an extra one here.
Who?
Oh, I'm sorry, we don't. I'm sorry. We.
This is not one based.
Unanimous approval of the consent agenda item A, all those present. Item number four, discussion and possible action to solicit bids for more critical sewer lines. Well, there'll be a listed, listing here, I'm sure. Tenny, are you, are you presenting that or Leroy?
Go ahead. I will have some remarks when Tenny gets done.
The sewer line in segment one is crossing State Highway 33. It's 800 feet east of Pine. It's an eight-inch clay tile line, numerous cracks, several spots that have failed, and is considered to be one of our critical lines. This portion of the line serves a large portion of our southeast quadrant of town. The sewer line in segment two is, runs along Blake Drive from Oklahoma to State Highway 33. It is also a eight-inch clay tile line. This, this line has several root balls that's intruding in the line, creating very little drainage. There's also a couple of manholes along this section of the line that is, brick manholes that are allowing infiltration from stormwater. The sewer line in segment three is between Walker and Magnolia from Hill Drive, south approximately, approximately 600 feet, and it is an eight-inch steel line. There are sections of this line that is collapsing, allowing roots. There's also a large lamp hole at the end of this line that's also allowing infiltration from the drainage ditch that runs beside it, as well as one section of this line that the top is busted out of that's also allowing infiltration in our system. And then the fourth segment of the line is between Walker and Magnolia. It feeds off of the segment three line. It's an eight-inch clay tile line that has several offset joints and intruding roots that serve seven customers off of the segment four line. All of these sewer lines are, we're looking at trying to fund off of our C-MOM program. This is two years combined. Last year's FY '21 and FY '22.
How old are these lines? Old. I mean, I know they're old.
I'd say probably every bit of between 80 to 100 years old.
Oh, I did, that's, yeah, that's, that's getting up for an age.
That's real old clay.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, I think so.
Any other questions? Tenny? Leroy, you said you had a comment.
Um, I just have a few comments more so for the general public's awareness than city council. These are all things that you all have been over in workshops, meetings, or our planning retreat. But just want to remind everybody, we've got 22 miles of sewer lines that back in, that study done in 2010 were either rated as failed or poor rating. And I'm sure in the last 12 years, they have not gotten any better. So some of them that were poor are probably failed now. We also have 55 miles of water lines that predate 1975, and a lot of those are close to 100 years old as well. $31.5 million to replace those. Water tar maintenance, we've identified over $2 million worth of upgrades that need be done. Booster pump on our 24-inch water line to feed the water plant is a million-dollar project. And Guthrie Lake spillway, we've identified another 1.8. So $62 million just in water and sewer improvements. The, um, my remarks, I kind of titled them, "You Can't Get There From Here", which everybody realizes is kind of a humorous phrase when given directions to a place that's far away or difficult to get to from your current location. But on the sewer collection system, as I talked, we've got 22 miles of lines need to be replaced. An estimate of 20 points, 25.7. That estimate was done over a year ago with inflation that we've seen from COVID. We've seen some of our estimates that 12 months old are probably 30% more cost now than so. So add 30% to that 25 million. To the general public, that sometimes just sounds like a big number. But to our public works crews that are out there weekly trying to maintain a sewer collection system of deteriorated and collapsed sewer lines and manholes, they know it's a real problem. But if you're not out there and actually witnessing it, you just think, well, that's just a big number. It is a real problem. And our C-MOM fee of $8 per month for every utility customer generates roughly $100,000 a year for sewer line replacement projects. $100,000 a year versus $25 million dollar replacement. You simply can't get there from here. One thing to keep this in perspective, though, probably 90% of the communities in Oklahoma are facing the same problem, so this is not an isolated situation just to Guthrie. Municipalities have notoriously deferred maintenance on sewer and water lines and bridges for a long time. Same thing with water distribution. $31 million, probably higher with inflation. 55 miles of water lines, many of them 100 years old. Again, that just sounds like a big number to the general public. But to our public work crews out there on a weekly basis trying to fix water leaks on deteriorated water lines with dysfunctional shut-off valves, they know it's a real problem. Many times when you're preparing, preparing, repairing a leaking water main to install a saddle, you're getting ready to put the saddle on, and the line is so brittle, it may split another four feet past where you will put the saddle on, and you got to start all over again to put the saddle further off. Or you put the saddle on, you fix that leak. Next week, you have another leak on that same line, two feet away, another eight feet of it splits, so you're right back where you were fixing that same area. The, uh, if you consider the age and deterioration of our water lines and the amount of mineral buildup in our lines, and we've shown pictures of some of our water lines and the amount of mineral buildup and how that affects when it gets stirred up. It's, it's safe to drink, but it affects the coloration, odor, taste. Until we replace those antiquated water lines, it doesn't, to some degree, matter what quality of water we have coming out of our water treatment plant because it's got to go through the distribution center to get, the system to get from the water plant to the end user. We could buy pristine bottled water and put it in the system, but it's still got to go across the system to get to the end user. Again, it's a real problem. 600,000 to 800,000 CDBG water line replacement project every couple of years versus $32 million a need. You can quickly do the math, and again, simply, you can't get there from here. And again, to keep perspective, this situation's in probably 90% of the communities in Oklahoma. We're working very diligently on a partial solution, trying to exhaust opportunities to obtain federal and state funding. We're pursuing funding through the Federal Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act. Nationwide, there's been $55 billion budgeted for water infrastructure, and we will try to pursue a portion of that funding. Congressional community project funding, or what used to be called EUMARC, we're pursuing those opportunities. And even some of those opportunities will require matching funds. Once we've exhausted the opportunity to get outside money, federal and state funding, at some point, we're going to have to start having real talk about additional local funding options. Either increased utility rates or general obligation bond issues, where we pass a bond issue using property tax to pay for some of these system improvements. Just want to keep that in front of everybody because it's not going to go away. Thanks.
Thank you, Leroy. Yeah, it's, uh, it's certainly a challenge. And, uh, and it's big money to fix it. And, uh, and it's gonna, it's gonna be, the entire city is gonna have to get behind that ultimate fix to make it happen, I think. Appreciate that, that summary.
Mayor, I would, would say that our cost estimate as of right now, just for these four segments of the line, which is roughly 1,500 feet or better, is $259,503, which is a little bit over what our current amount is for our C-MOM budget. As Leroy said, usually generates right around $100,000. But as bids come in, we may have to bring back when we actually award a bid to a contractor. We may even have to look at cutting some of these out because, due to the estimate cost.
I believe we have unbudgeted fund balance, and we also showed that we would have a fund balance, budgeted fund balance at the end of this year, so we should be able to accommodate the cost estimate.
Make a motion to approve second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes, Ryan.
See the votes. Unanimous approval, then, to go ahead and solicit bids for replacing our, fixing those four critical sewer lines that were identified. Item number five, discussion and possible action to approve soliciting bids to replace 18 critical fire hydrants. Guess you're still up.
Again, this project will replace 18 fire hydrants around town that have, that currently have one of the following problems resulting in being placed out of order. You may see a lot of our fire plugs around town. They have the plastic bags on them. They're on there due to either they're leaking, broke, or seized up stems, no valves to shut them on or off, or they're just obsolete plugs that we cannot, no longer get repair kits for. This cost estimate come to $199,580. We're looking at using the remaining $200,000 of our ARPA funds to fund this project.
Make a motion to approve that, too?
Second. Motion and a second. Any questions? Tenny? Submit your votes.
All votes, Ryan.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to go ahead and solicit bids to replace those 18 critical fire hydrants. Item number six, staff has not completed their full assessment and presentation for that, so no action is taken at this time. We follow it up at a future city council meeting. With that, our Public Works Authority Meeting is closed, and I open up our city council meeting of February 15th. Second item on our agenda is a consent agenda items A and B. A is the approval of the minutes of the February 1st special city council meeting, and B is the approval of the minutes of the February 1st regular city council meeting. We'll entertain a motion.
Sub moved.
A motion.
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes, Ryan.
See the votes. Unanimous approval of the consent agenda items A and B. Item number three, discussion and possible action to approve subletting of outstanding rental payments. A assignment of lease agreement, only signed on February 5th, 2002, concerning hangar number two as amended by the city council and Spirit Wing Aviation. Leroy?
The assignment or subletting of a lease, um, it, uh, we cannot unreasonably withhold the approval of a consent to assign a lease from one party to another. But there has to be some formal document that does that. Back on September 7th, the city council made a motion for the attorney to prepare a lease assignment document for hangar two, transferring the lease from Spirit Wing to Bob Bartman, who is going to use the name Cloud Nine Aviation. There's been some communication back and forth between the two parties that are signing the lease. It should be a very simple document. It is not completed at this time. One way we could handle this is to approve the signature of the assignment of the lease agreement for hangar two, once it's been reviewed and approved by the city attorney.
So.
So who's doing the assignment for? Are we doing it?
There's three of us involved. The city, uh, and the, uh, Mr. Bartman, Cloud Nine Aviation, and of course, Spirit Wing. And they all have different ideals of what ought to be in there, but it's just a simple one to two-page thing, assigning an existing lease.
So they're trying to change the lease during the process here, or what?
No, the second item is the one that's amending the lease. The first one ought to be a simple thing, but they keep trying to put things in there that aren't kosher to just the assignment of the lease.
So what do you really need from us out of this one?
On this one, I think it's simple enough. Our city attorney can review it and say no until it gets in the form that's acceptable to the city. And if we just give him the authority to, uh, for it to be signed once he has approved it in its final form.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes, Ryan.
See the votes. Unanimous approval from all those present to approve, then, the signature of the lease agreement as identified. Item number four, discussion and possible action to approve the February 15th, 2022 amendment to the Hangar Two ground lease agreement between City Guthrie and Cloud Nine Aviation. Leroy?
So, and Billy can jump in if he wants, but so the action that we just took is simply assigning the lease from one party to the next. And Mr. Bartman through Cloud Nine wanted some modifications to the lease, which was, uh, done back in 2002, so it is dated. We also wanted some modifications because our model lease agreement that we use, the lease hangars, ground lease for hangars at the airport, has changed since 2002. The, uh, Mr. Bartman's attorney and our city attorney have had several drafts go through. And what you have that I handed out is in final form. It has been reviewed by the airport board. They recommend that we approve it. City staff thinks that the modified, this doesn't have anything to do with fuel cells or any of that. That's a separate thing. This only has to do with the lease of hangar two in Storm Plains.
How long are typical ground leases? I mean, this is going to be through '43, so that's 21 years remaining. What are our typical?
The, the current lease that he is being assigned expires, the, uh, the base lease expires in 2023 with the option for four or five-year extensions.
Four or five-year?
It took 2043. And so Mr. Bartman did not want to, um, sign a, a lease and only have it for two years and not be guaranteed the other 20 years. That's why we changed it to 2043. There was another language in the old lease. I don't know how anybody agreed to it, where in 2023, when it was time to renew it for those four or five-year options, it basically said the city could charge whatever rent they wanted, and if you didn't like it, your lease was canceled. Well, that's really not a very fair way of doing things. So we modified that so that every five years, the lease amount is, it will start at the current per square foot that all the other hangar leases at the airport pay, and every five years, that will be adjusted based on a consumer price index adjustment.
So a 20-year lease with an adjustable rate every five years?
Correct.
And with four or five-year extensions?
No, that, that absorbs those extensions. So 2043 is the end.
And that's all that's changed in here?
There are some other things changed that protects the city, like, for example, it's in there, every 10 years, we can require them to paint the hangar based on inspection by the city. So there's some things that are in our current model lease that wasn't in that old lease that now's in the new one. And basically, what he can use it for is to lease space to commercial aircraft. Yep.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve what the airport board being appropriate.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Submit your votes.
All votes, Ryan.
See the votes. Unanimous approval from those present to approve the amended agreement between our Hangar Two ground lease agreement between the city and Cloud Nine Aviation, terms going through November of 2043. We'll now enter into a public hearing, our city council meeting, public hearing to discuss the potential submission of a 2022 Recreation Trails Program Grant Application. Leroy?
I will make an initial presentation, and we will open it up for public comments after I address any questions you all might have. The first page of the presentation is the notice that we distribute on the RTP grant that is awarded by the Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department. In your packet I put on your desk is the PowerPoint presentation. If you, if it's easier for you to look at it there instead on the slides. Behind the PowerPoint in your packet is attached the master plan, and then also the cost, the three cost estimates for the three projects, in case they're too small to read on the screen. Those are on the, attached to the back of the document I handed out. The, uh, the trails that we're looking at, and this is the master plan, and the goal is to connect the residential areas to downtown, to shopping, to parks, to schools. And what we have done is, uh, the Section A of the 2022 TSAT Trails Grant is a project we looked at in 2018 that was not funded, and tying it into future expansion of a trail system in Noble Park. And that will be, based on your all's decision, the OTRD Recreation Trails Program Grant Application. And then the second, uh, one for, uh, the TSAT would be along Walnut Street, picking up where we had a Safe Routes to School sidewalk program, taking that on down to Oklahoma, and then shooting off and going to tie into the trails that we have in Highland Park. So there are other trails that, of course, could be looked at, and there's no doubt about it, but based on what we've tried to look at previously and connect to prior projects and looking at trying to be competitive, these are the three projects that are currently being recommended. Of course, these grants are available on, at least the OTRD grant is available on an annual basis. So, you know, we can do other projects in the future, but these are the ones that we're recommending. I would point out that both of these grant opportunities are very competitive. There's no guarantee you'll get any of the three grants when you apply. Documentation of support from the end users and the community in general will significantly enhance our applications. So community groups and individuals that support this application, providing letters of support, will carry a lot of weight in the scoring for these applications when they're rated. Economic benefits of trails, uh, trails, along with other community amenities, can influence business location decisions. Companies often look at communities that offer a high level of amenities to their future employees. Trails make communities more attractive places to live. A lot of studies have showed when considering where to move, homebuyers rank walking and biking trails as one of the most important things they look at, along with other factors, of course. With trails being such a big draw for potential residents, municipalities are challenged with the responsibility to serve their current residents and to attract new ones. General benefits of trails, of course, it promotes safe and livable communities, promotes physical activity, healthy lifestyles, and community engagement. Some of the health benefits of trails, I won't read all those, but access to trails motivates people to participate in physical activity and do, to do so more frequently. And there's a listing of all the various things that can help from a health standpoint by utilizing trails. The RTP, or the Recreation of Trails Program Grant, that has been a notice of funding availability distributed for. The application deadline is February 28th. We kind of got short notice on this one, and so there may be some modi- And so there may be some minor modifications to the projects between now and when we submit it, but I think it, the presentation tonight is pretty spot on on what our application will be, but there may be some refinements. The RTP, it's a $300,000 maximum grant with at least a $75,000 match. It's 80/20. The match may either be in cash or in value of documented contributions. We are going to try to do as much in-kind work for the matching funds as we can. And you can use other federal funds for match in addition to local money. If for some reason we get some more COVID funding, we could look at that. It's a reimbursable grant. You pay for the project and then you get 80% of it back. The project sponsor is required to hold a public meeting to obtain input from interested and affected public on the need and planning of each proposed project, and that's what we're doing tonight. The RTP grant that we're proposing is for Noble Park, which has a historical and cultural importance within the African-American community, both in Guthrie and Forte State. And the goal is to create a connective hub to the master trail plan with educational recreational opportunities. This particular project Phase One would be to put a bridge at Ninth Street. That portion of the Cottonwood Creek is now a oxbow. The main course of the creek has meandered and cut off that area, so the main channel does not flow through this area anymore. So that's why it is conducive to put the bridge there because you won't be dealing with as many floodwaters because it's not in the main channel anymore. It's just backup water now because it's part of the oxbow. But that will take a significant portion of the $300,000 project. And then we will put some trails in and it will tie into Section A of the TSAT grant. And then our plan is to do multiple phases of about 350,000 each phase to finish out the trail system there and tie it into the culture and history of the area. We'd like to someday have a trail where we could do a 5K run, where you don't have to cross division, and it would reduce the need for traffic control and also be safer than having to stop traffic on Division four or 5K run. The budget for this one, again, I attached it, but the total project is 375,000. Our in-kind labor, this one, because so much of it is the bridge, you, we can't get a lot of the in-kind labor out of it, but it's roughly $30,000. Our cash match will be 44,000 for a total match of 75,000 with a $300,000 grant. The TSAT application, this one is called their Policy and Built Environment Change Grant. Application for this one is March 15th, a little further out. $350,000 maximum funding per year. You can get two grants, back-to-back years. So we're going to go ahead and apply for both years' funding. The match requirement is one-to-one, so it's a 50% grant, 50% match. Community buy-in and input, again, that's going to be very important when they rate our grant applications is to show a public support with letters of support. Eligible projects or bike lanes and multiple-use trails, safe routes to schools, parks and/or grocery stores. There's other eligible things, but those are the two projects we're doing. Section A basically starts at the railroad tracks on Oklahoma, goes to Fifth Street and uses Fifth Street to tie in, and then the trail would go from down Warner to tie into Banner Park and then tie back into the sidewalks on Noble Avenue. And then there will be another segment on the south side of Noble that we'll go over and tie into the banner or to the elbow or Noble Park project. We will add some additional features that don't show on this map, but like workout stations at certain places where if you're walking, a lot of people for fitness purposes will stop at a, at a station where you do certain physical activities and then you go to next. Some bike racks, some benches that we don't have in this project yet. We're looking at trying to figure out how to add those. This particular grant, the, it will be a $631,000 project, 315,000 roughly grant. Our in-kind labor on this will be 208,000, and I'm rounding these number up. And our cash expense is 107,000. Section B, as we talked about, will be along Walnut, picking up where we left off on the Safe Routes to School grant that we completed several years ago, and take that sidewalk on down to Oklahoma. And then it will also tie into Highland Park Trail System. This Segment B, it is a $257,000 grant with the same amount of matching. Our in-kind labor, 152,000, and our cash expense, 104,000. So to kind of summarize those, these three grants combined will give us 1.5 million dollars of trail improvements. 872,000 or 57% of it will be grant-funded. 391,000 we will generate by basically acting as our own contractor and in-kind labor, which would be salaries, benefits and equipment, et cetera. Those salaries are already budgeted and we already have those, but, but it is a cost. But we're going to be using those crews for something. And then 256,000 is cash match. I know that it's, it's a little of a misstatement, but if you consider that you already budgeting to have your personnel and you're going to use them to do projects, in some respects, you're taking 256,000 of cash and turning it into 1.5 million dollars of trail projects.
Well, I think it's an awesome project. If we can pull it off.
I think it's great, too. I'm not here to stop progress, obviously, but it's probably been about 10 years ago, maybe longer, I saw a plan on the third floor of flooding the elbow and creating a small lake. I don't know if you've seen that drawing? Have you seen that drawing?
I've heard of it.
Yeah. And, you know, water is life to a city. And we know that in downtown Oklahoma City, a lot of places where they've done flood control and creating those kinds of things, I don't know what that cost would be, but I think that, I mean, they, they showed, you know, places for paddle boating and kayaking and really in activities like in downtown Guthrie if we did that with the elbow.
I know in Tulsa with the river over there, which is a river and a creek, they've always looked at creating a situation similar to Oklahoma City and San Antonio and the locks and stuff that you have to build to control the water. Because when you had a high-water event from a flood, there would be a pretty substantial investment to have dams, a series of dams to hold that water back and let it in over a period of time. That project would cost substantially more than this, but I've not reviewed that project to now.
I have not.
But, but you're right. Water features are important. I know we have a group of students from engineering seniors at OSU, and they are doing some bridge design work. And we are, one of the bridges that they're designing for us to look at would be a bridge in Mineral Wells Park that would connect the two bodies of land across the pond area with a fishing area in the middle. So we agree, water is very attractive. I just don't know that that's a project that we could undertake relative to the elbow or Noble Park at this time.
But it's something could be looked at because you could do trails around it as well, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I know.
I never saw that plan.
I, I, there was certainly some discussion about doing that, and they got into looking at the cost just preliminary, and it was pretty astronomical. Plus, the, the getting, the purchasing all the property from the, from the owners, private property owners that, where the city didn't own the property. There was a significant, even identifying who they were was a significant challenge. Anyway, I don't, didn't go anywhere, but I think it's still a neat potential. I don't, and I don't know that the trails necessarily diminish that potential. But I know, I know it's expensive.
It's hard to talk about trails and lakes anyway when Cousin Eddie's over here telling us our shitter's full and we need to amputate her.
But you're right, Councilman, water does attract.
The, the OTR is, that trail is pedestrian-only? That, basically the bridge is pedestrian-only? Is that correct?
The, the bridge will be 12-foot wide?
12-foot wide, rated at, currently what we're looking at is 12-foot wide, a little over 100-foot long with a 20,000-pound rating.
Ton.
Okay.
So 20,000-ton rating. So the, our plans are to have multimodal. Now, the sidewalk over connecting to the safe routes to school won't be that wide, but we tried to plan trails that are 12-foot wide so that you can have walking on one side, bicycle on the other, so they are multimodal. And, and the, the bridge, part of that cost is making it wide enough so that we can get medical over to the Noble Park area in case there's an incident where we need to respond for a medical emergency. We can get our, our pickups and maintenance vehicles over there. Now, it will have a bollard where you can't just drive across it. It'll be locked down. But we'll be able to get a brush truck across there, which right now is kind of a safety issue because if we have a grass fire in that area, we really don't have good access to that area to put that brush fire out. So with the bridge we're putting in, we will have access for maintenance, safety vehicles to respond to both police and fire.
Okay, good. Anybody else have any questions, Leroy?
What became of the low-water bridge that used to go into that area?
It washed away.
It was over on Perkins and Fifth. That is now where the main current body of water flows. That low-water crossing that was in that area has washed away. Where we're looking at putting the bridge at now, there used to be a Ninth Street Bridge in that area.
Right, yeah.
I remember.
But it used to be the primary channel, yes.
Yes.
All right, all right. Okay. Any other questions, Leroy? Okay, this is a public hearing. Ms. Cameron?
Hi.
Would you please come, identify yourself, your address, and you have five minutes?
Okay, I'm Julie Cameron. I live at 4900 East Simmons in the county. And my primary goal tonight was just to find out what the recreational trails grant might be used for. You, you may remember me. I came to a city council meeting eight or 10 years ago as the crazy lady who said, can I go do maintenance at Liberty Lake? And so we've, we've really improved the trails out there. And by the way, we do have a 5K route, so if you wanted to do a 5K, you could do it there. But we've done a lot of improvements to, and last year or two years during the COVID lockdown, there was tremendous, I mean, I don't know if you saw it on, financially speaking, but there were a lot of people out there. I rode the trails like three times a week, and there were always people, and I'd ask them where they were from, El Reno, Stillwater, all different places than, so that, that was, you know, I thought that was pretty, pretty neat that they found our trail. And, but we, we wanted to just see what was available, if there was any opportunity for improvements. One of the long-term goals I have for the lake is still to be able to go completely around it with some type of motorized vehicle for emergency reasons, and right now that's not possible. So I just wanted to offer my support, you know? If there's things that come up, I'm available, and I have some pretty good volunteers. So that's all. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. Does anybody on the council have any questions, Ms. Cameron? And thank you for your efforts out there at Liberty Lake. Again, public, public hearing. Anybody else? Any other public members want to have access? Leroy?
I just would echo that they have done tremendous work out there with very limited resources. And there is potential out there, and at some point, as we pursue other grants for trails in the future, of course, horse riding and also bicycling, especially bicycling in more of a wilderness setting is becoming a big tourist attraction. So we agree that there's potential out there, and as we identify future opportunities, hopefully we can pursue some, some grants to assist and improve that area as well.
Okay. Last chance for any other public input. Okay, I'm going to close our public hearing, and we'll move on to item number six, Discussion Possible Action Resolution 2022-10 to authorize the submission of a 2022 Recreational Trails Grant Application to the Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes, please.
Vote, Senator.
See the votes. Unanimous approval from those present to approve Resolution 2022-10 to authorize that submission to the, to the Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department. Item number seven, Discussion Possible Action Resolution 2022-11 and Resolution 2022-12 to authorize submission of two general trail project grants application to TSAT.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
Vote, Senator.
See the votes. Unanimous approval from those present then to move forward Resolution 2022-11 and Resolution 2022-12. Item number eight, Discussion Possible Action to Confirm Mayor's Nomination of Colleen Golightly for the Balance of a Three-Year Term through June 30th, 2024 for the Guthrie Admin Regional Airport Board. This, her application, I think, has been seen by all members of the council. It has gone through also the board as, as part of our, our new process that we have established. Actually, this is a process we've always followed with the board. But we have the board's endorsement of Ms. Golightly also, so it's up to the council to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
Vote, Senator.
See the votes. Unanimous approval of nomination of Colleen Golightly for the Balance of a Three-Year Term to the Guthrie- term to the Guthrie Edmund Regional Airport. Item number three, City Manager Report.
I do not have any additional reports tonight, but I would point out the outside council working on the law case on the opioid situation is not present, so we do not need to go in the executive session.
Okay.
There you go.
All right. Item number 10, City Council Comments. Councilman General.
I have nothing.
Councilman Bathory.
Yeah, I appreciate all the work you guys do on the trail thing. I hope we can pull something like that off, and I support that 100%.
Councilman Long.
I just honestly just want to thank, I made a crack, a wise crack joke earlier, but it's true, that he's the one that gets that call when the toilets don't flush, so I just appreciate everything our Public Works Department does to try to keep 100-year-old pipes still flushing. So, thank you to you and your team.
Councilman Taylor.
I'll echo that because you look around the town, and the town's old and we're historic center, yet we have lines that are as old as the town is, so that's, that's getting pretty bad. We want to try to get those updated. I, I'm glad that you brought that up, Leroy, it's something that needs to be done. You and Tenny together have been working on this, so that's great for the staff, I really appreciate it. I'm glad to see people looking for that, so.
Councilman Williams.
Well, I agree with Leroy, it's a ticking time bomb, we're going to have to address it. People aren't going to like the outcome of, but we're going to have to do something about it. Also, I'm driving past Banner Park even today on my side of town. A lot of people flock down there and enjoy it, families, kids playing and picnicking going on, and it's just a really nice park, and I imagine all the rest of them are busy too, but that's one I see regularly, so it's really nice to have, and looking forward to these trails is really a plus. Hopefully we can get something done with that.
Very good. Well, echo Councilman Long's comments about, you know, obviously we've got some, some infrastructure that needs to be handled in a lot of different ways, sewer, water, roads, and our public works people are just there doing 24/7, making, making responses to try to keep a Band-Aid on a, on a real challenging issue that we have, and it's kind of like, you pay me now or you pay me later, and I think that's what citizens of our town are facing with our infrastructure. Leroy, thank you for that summary that you, that you put in.
And if I could, I, I might remind everybody, we're trying to get as much outside funding as we can, and 800, just under 800,000 of the ARPA money that we got directly, we have applied to the state for another 800,000 of state ARPA money, which would deal 1.6 million, it's not 32 million. But we are always looking for funding opportunities for our water and wastewater infrastructure.
We are, and thank you for doing that. We have, we do have some opportunities for citizens to get involved more directly with our community direction. We have one vacancy on our Board of Adjustment. We have one coming up in May on the Library Board, and we have one on our Historic Preservation Commission, and three that are coming up in May. One, no?
Planning Commission.
Did I say, oh, and planning?
You said Board of Adjustment.
I'm sorry?
You said Board of Adjustment.
Oh, it's the planning?
Yeah, planning.
I thought we had one on Board of Adjustment also.
Board of Adjustments.
Okay. I stand corrected by our expert on the Planning Commission. We have one on the Planning Commission, not Board of Adjustment, but we, and we have one on Historic Preservation at the present time, and three that are coming due in March. So if you have interest in the historical aspect of our community, this would be a good opportunity to come in and put your, put your application in. Applications are online or can be received right here on the third floor of City Hall if you want to come in. But anyway, some good opportunities to, to further serve our community and, and help with the direction on where our community is headed. Okay, we, item, item number 11 is, perhaps, not to be considered, and so that being the last item of real action, we are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much.